Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Dale Smythe.
Here.
Jackie Savina.
Here.
Skylar Quinn.
Here.
Andrew Romerdal.
Here.
Brian Flynn.
Here.
Travis Santo.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Next order of business are minutes. We have minutes for Thursday, June 8th, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Could I have a positive motion, please? Moved by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Flynn now. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes are approved. And we move on to a special order of business disclosures. We have a number of disclosures this evening. Can start with Mr. Flynn.
I was absent from the original meeting for case number 20- or 2023-0023, so I will be abstaining from voting on that case.
Thank you. And Mr. Romerdal?
Through the chair, I was also absent for the March 9th meeting and will be abstaining from participating in voting on case 2023-0023.
Thank you. And Mr. Santo?
Through the chair, I abstain from voting on the minutes and I will abstain from voting on the consent agenda as I was not yet seated on the board. I will also abstain from participating in the unfinished business public hearing of case 2023-0023.
Thank you. And Ms. Savina?
Yes, hello. I was not at the June meeting and will not be able to vote on resolution consent agenda from the meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair, it's Skylar. I have a disclosure to make. I just want to know from the record that I need to leave this meeting immediately following case 2023-0023. Not really a disclosure, but just information for you.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Hale moves, Mr. Smythe seconds. Does anyone wish to push, pull a case from the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Is there any objection to approval of the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. And we'll move on to, well, there are no appearance requests. We'll move on to the unfinished business. The unfinished business is case 2023-0023. And the petitioner is Lisa Ernest. Well, the staff, let's see. So it, we started this case before and the public hearing portion of the case is over. So we are, we, we ask for additional information. So I guess we should hear from the staff first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So on the March 9th meeting, this action was postponed in request of new information or additional information that was requested by commissioners. If you turn to page three of four of your minutes from that meeting, Chair Hale mentioned that this, this site needed to be surveyed, that what had been presented as the as-built was not accurate and was requesting or requiring additional information, more accurate information of the survey. At the time, as you remember, in March, we had too much snow on the ground and so the surveyor could not get out at that time. The applicant, Ms. Ernest, therefore in June, brought in additional information as requested because her surveyor was then actually able to get out and survey the creek in its actual location with all its turns and edges and therefore verify the creek setback and the actual riparian setback. That is in your new information in the as-built. And the applicant is here, both Ed and Lisa are here if you want any more information. They do have two different variations. I don't know if you want to see those. They're not numbered unlike your normal packet is. But they have two variations, one showing the 15.5 feet into the riparian edge and then the other one is, and I can't read it because I can't see that good. Is it 6.8 or 8.9? 9.9, thank you, Lisa. And they are here to answer any questions that might be asked of them.
So now with the new information, we will continue our discussion. I guess. Does anybody have any questions of the petitioner or staff? Okay, Mr. Hale?
Thank you through the chair. So we left off with not knowing quite where the creek was and now we know where it is. And we also know that this zoning district is made for features like this and that's the reason for the special design of houses that's stated in code. So I guess my question would be, is there a compelling reason why you can't modify the house a little bit to, to stay out of the easements and the setbacks? It looks like it's pretty close. With this board, I mean, we give variances when we need to, but you don't need to and you can actually meet the code. We prefer that. So is there a compelling reason why you can't change the design of the building?
No, there isn't. We could do a complete house redesign. The nine-foot-nine setback was the minimum variance request needed for the current house design that had already been done. And the 15.5 was what the surveyor substantiated. We asked originally for 15-foot-8. And when he did this AutoCAD thing, he came up with 15.5 for the original location that we submitted. He slid it back as far as he could to stay at the 40-foot setback, which is a CCNR requirement from the lot line. And that ended up at the nine-foot-nine for the current house design that we have.
I mean, it just looks like this is a special zoning district for these type of features and it looks like if you were to change the footprint of your house slightly, that you could actually meet the requirements of your zoning and not have to get a variance. This is what the staff has pointed out. You haven't built anything yet, right?
No, we haven't built anything yet.
I, excuse me, I forgot to get you to state your name and spell it for the record, both of you, so.
My name is Lisa Ernest, spelled L-I-S-A, last name E-R-N-E-S-T.
And Edward Ernest, last name E-R-N-E-S-T.
Thank you. Sorry.
No worries. We've already put in the septic system and the well and so changing the position and layout of the house might pose a little bit of difficulty with that. So we had the current plans drafted and imposed on the site as is right now. Does that help answer the question?
So what is the setback required from the septic field? Is it 30 feet? I guess that's a staff question.
Through the chair, I actually know what the setbacks requirements are for on-site systems. I can look it up real quick in code if you'd like me to.
I'm just trying to figure out why we can't. I know that you'd have to go back and design the house differently, but it's not like, you know, half the houses in the, in the setback. It looks like with some minor modifications of your design, you may have to give a little bit or maybe turn the thing a certain way, but it looks like you could make this work without a variance. Is what it's looking like to me.
Yeah, as the current house is designed, again, the surveyor, the certified surveyor uses AutoCAD. We didn't have any involvement in that. The nine-foot-nine is what he came up with. So as our current house was designed from the original meeting, we're trying to continue with that design that we have already planned out with the architect.
You're working with an architect?
We're working with a company. I think, yeah, Remote Alaska, I always get their name wrong. Remote Alaska Solutions was the one that was helping us with that design.
And you haven't had any conversations with them about the ability to modify the footprint of the house to accommodate these setbacks? They just gave you a square?
What's that?
They just gave you a rectangle and said, there you go?
No, we had the house designed with them and then later we found out about these setbacks. So we could go back and redesign a whole new house. You know, I'm not telling you we can't. I mean, anybody can design a different house, but the house that we have had designed requires the nine-foot-nine minimum in order to fit on that property. So we're still pursuing the variance.
Yeah, the reason I'm pursuing this line of questioning is because this zone is particular to this type of situation. And if we gave everyone variances for every case of this, the zone would have to just go away because we couldn't, we'd have to give variances to everybody. That's why there's special design criteria that's used for houses in this type of zone. And it looks like you're so close that you could rotate it a little bit and maybe modify the design slightly and meet the code and not need a variance. Does that seem like something you guys would be willing to explore?
As long as we can maintain the proper distance from the septic field, we can look at that. Did we find out how far we have to be from the?
I am looking at it right now. According to this, the only thing I've found so far is it can't be within five feet of a property line, but I'm still trying to find out the distance from a home.
May I ask a question? Does it make any difference that we're just asking for one small segment and not for the entirety of the creek line? Like, we're not asking for the nine-foot-nine for the entire creek bed. It's just that one corner of the house.
I mean, that's what everybody's here for, their one corner of their, whatever it is is in the, in the thing. That's why, I mean, if you've got something that, that is such a, I mean, this looks like a minor modification that an architect could work around if they thought about it a little bit. I mean, I work in AutoCAD too and I could tweak this pretty quick and make it work. It just doesn't look that hard. I just don't know if, you've talked to him about it? And it might, it might require a small design change. And I don't know, you know, what does that take? I think we have a planner who does some of this house design. Is that, is that a major thing?
Through the chair, it depends on how much, how many on and what things are located in certain areas, but it could happen. So what I have found so far is that the field needs to maintain 10, 10 feet from any building foundation. Just the horizontal separation from a disposal, disposal field. Nothing related to tank location that I can find.
So the tank, I have got a septic and it's like right next to my house.
Right, so it's just the field, that's the 10 feet?
Yeah, it's got to be off. So I mean, if it's 10 feet, you've still got 20 feet to work with and with an architect, they ought to be able to make this thing fit. I'm just kind of of the mind that you could make this work without the need of a variance and, you know, it'd work for everybody. I know this is a process and you guys have come back.
The other thing that we were looking at was the lot. And of course, I don't understand what this map means. Is that where the lot drops off? To rotate?
The reason that I'm, I'm asking all these questions is I, I'm having a hard time. I'm bound by the code, right? And the code spells out pretty specifically that, that this zoning is all about these type of features and the need for creative design. And right now, I don't see a way that I can vote positively for something because it looks like it is self-imposed and it looks like it's not the minimum. You know, you guys could maybe redesign the house a little bit and, and meet the requirements of the code. So I'm going to have a hard time supporting a positive motion is what I'm, and so I'm thinking, is there another way that, you know, we could accommodate you guys or the architect could, could redesign the thing? Other board members may feel differently.
Anyone else? No other discussion? Then I guess we'll vote. Oh, sorry, we need a motion. We need a positive motion. Mr. Smythe?
I move, excuse me, in case 2023-0023 to approve a variance from AMC 21.07.020 to allow single-family residents to encroach 15.66 feet into the required 25-foot riparian edge zone of Stuckigan Creek subject to the condition shown on page eight of the staff report.
Mr. Hale seconds. Mr. Smythe, will you speak to your motion, please?
I will, through the chair. I don't intend to support my motion. I understand it is somewhat small, the request that you're asking for. Much like Dave said, though, the stream setback is important to me personally and, and it is a, a code that we have to stick to. I know as an architect, design changes cost money and there will be some variant, some version of that that you'll have to deal with it. I, I think best case scenario in this, in this situation is if we would have gotten a survey and there would have been no setback requirement. We had to get that information to know. We have it now. I apologize. I just don't think it's met the, the requirements for self-imposed as David stated earlier. Thanks.
Mr. Hale?
Through the chair, I don't really have much to add. I support the staff findings.
Okay, now we're ready. Ready to vote.
Ms. Savina, how do you vote? Mr. Quinn, how do you vote?
Okay, we have zero yes votes and five no votes and three abstain. So the variance has been denied. Sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we're saying goodbye to Mr. Quinn?
Yes, I wasn't sure if I should have invited him to remind you, but yes, that's correct. Thank you for your time and thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you for calling in. Okay, so nothing on the regular agenda and we move on to public hearings. And all three of the public hearings tonight, three, four, all four of the public hearings tonight are variance hearings. And according to regulation, the chair shall introduce a variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board will hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief presentation outlining the variance. On the conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation and throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant who must convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. The applicant, including all of his or her representatives, has 10 minutes for the presentation and may reserve time for rebuttal at the end of the public hearing. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. Then the public hearing will be open for public testimony. Representatives have five minutes, individuals have three minutes. The time is set by, is kept by the secretary. The display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed, then it will turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony. At the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, the staff, or the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. A concurring vote of the majority of the fully constituted membership of the board minus those excused by conflicts of interest shall be required to grant variance. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be substantially met. The parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. With that, the first case is case 2023-0019. Heidi and Jesse Ostby are the petitioners and they indicate that they are here. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On May 24th, 2023, a total of 117 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of AMC 21.03.020H. No new comments were received with the public hearing notices. Thank you.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing and hearing none, will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a request for a variance from AMC 2106.020, table 2106. That's the Dimensional Standards for Residential Districts to allow for an increase in allowable lot coverage to exceed the maximum lot coverage of 5% to accommodate the construction of a detached garage. Granting the request would allow the maximum lot coverage of 6.75%. The petition site is 105,415 square foot lot with a three-story, single-family house and attached garage with a separate detached garage. The proposed detached garage will be located on the southwestern side of the lot and will encompass approximately 3,032 square feet of building area and will be partially constructed within the footprint of the existing garage that will be torn down. Should this variance be approved, the final total lot coverage should not exceed 6.75% of the lot. This amount of lot coverage will exceed 1,184, 1,844 square feet. So the planning department also is currently processing a Title 21 text amendment through an assembly ordinance to increase the maximum lot coverage to 10% in the R9 zoning district. Planning anticipates a public hearing of the text amendments on July 25th of this month. And in the cases of the findings, staff has found that standard A has been met. There's a significant degree of slope associated with the eastern portion of the property and suitable building area on the western portion of property where the proposed garage is located. There is a significant elevation difference to the neighboring properties to the east. A lot coverage variance would be directly related to the unusually shaped lot and there is, or if there are geotechnical issues within, which would limit building height. The subject property is a conforming R9 lot. Staff finds that standard B, however, is not met. There's, there are some physical circumstances, but steep slopes do not create an exceptional hardship as slope is not related to the need of the variance. Strict interpretation of Title 21 allows for single-family home and garage. The property owners will still be able to make lawful use of their property. Staff finds that standard C is not met as that standard speaks to the peculiarity of the lot that arises out of some natural or physical condition of the lot or land and structures on those are artificial conditions. The need for the variance is a result of the desire of the applicant. However, every zoning regulation necessary imposes some burden on property because by definition, it limits the uses to which land may be put. So long as all land is similarly situated, is subject to the same restrictions, hardship caused by the zoning classification alone does not constitute a valid ground for variance. Staff finds that standard D is met. Given the character, history, current zoning of the neighborhood, it doesn't appear at this time that granting the variance to exceed the lot coverage would adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. All property structures will be constructed on property and outside of required setbacks. Neighborhood, neighboring property owners will retain the ability to make full lawful use of their property. Staff finds that condition E is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the R9 zoning district in which the site is located. So the R9 is intended for single and two-family, large lot residential areas with gross dwelling unit of one to two per acre. Granting this variance to exceed lot coverage by 1.75% will not permit either principal or accessory use other than what is already permitted under Anchorage Municipal Code. The property will be developed in a manner that's consistent with the R9 district. Staff finds that condition F has been met. As in standard E, no area impacts have been identified. Allowing the single-family home and detached garage to be constructed in the proposed manner will allow the owner to store the vehicles and boats in a protective manner from the inclement weather conditions. And there are no negative anticipated impacts to the welfare residents of the municipality. Staff finds that standard G is met. That's single-family homes, not subject to the provisions. And standard, lastly, finds, staff finds that standard H is met. There is no threshold for a variance to lot coverage, but the encroachment is small, only 1.75 feet on a 2.42-acre lot. Although the garage could be built with a smaller footprint, a 1.75% lot coverage encroachment to rebuild a garage larger does seem to be a minimal variance and allows a reasonable use of the property. With that, as those standards, the eight standards need to be substantially met, department finds that standards B and C are not met and standards D, E, F, and G are met. Therefore, the recommend, staff recommends denial. However, if the board, after a public hearing, finds that all eight standards are met, then the approval should be subject to the conditions found on page six of the staff packet. However, staff would like to address some of the comments that were received and add a fourth condition. And that fourth condition will read, I'll let the clerk catch up here, "provide an as-built showing greenhouse structure has been removed." So that one, there was a comment there about an older structure, I believe on the eastern side of the property. So that, that's something that they'll have to provide, an updated as-built stamped that, that that structure has been removed before they can proceed. Thank you. Now, through the, through the chair, the clerk, I can repeat that condition if you'd like me to.
Yes, please.
So it'll be, "provide an as-built showing greenhouse structure has been removed."
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Hale?
Thank you, through the chair. So in July, they're going to vote on upping that coverage to 10%?
Yes, yeah.
Is there, is that contentious? Do you expect that that's just going to get approved? Is it something that you've been working on?
Well, it's through the Omnibus Act. Ryan Yell here might be able to, he's the one that is kind of carrying that through. He might be able to speak to it a little bit.
Yes, through the chair, so Planning and Zoning Commission did consider that proposal several months ago and they did not have any objection to it, so they recommended approval. At this time, it's, it's unknown how the Anchorage Assembly is going to vote upon that particular part of the Omnibus ordinance, which is, encompasses quite a, quite a great number of changes to Title 21, so it's difficult to presume the outcome.
Anyone else have questions of staff? Seeing none, are there any questions of staff by the applicant? Could you state your, could you?
Could you press the button to turn the mic on? Thank you.
No, okay.
Heidi Ostby, H-E-I-D-I-O-S-T-B-Y. I just want to clarify, am I, is that a requirement you guys, for me to come back another day with a different as-built survey?
No, that, that fourth condition in the staff packet would be if the board finds that the granting of the variance, that it would be something you would have to do before the, before the variance is finalized and the NCA is recorded and you can, after that, then you could proceed with your building permit.
Okay. Okay, well, the applicant, okay, you did come forward and spell your name. Please present your case.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I realize that I don't meet a couple of the criteria. Just to give you a brief background, I know maybe you guys have already read everything. The whole reason I even am applying for the variance, we did a modification, we did an addition to our house back in 2021. There was miscommunication with the planning department and our contractor at the time who thought that we had gotten this minor modification that would give us an additional 5%, not 5% of 5%. So we went through with this whole addition, maxed it out, and then when it came down to closing out our permit last summer, we realized that we were cutting it close, like almost going over. And then rules changed in the zoning. There's like a new deck allowance that we were made aware of. So all of the numbers, when we were closing out our permit, were fine for us to close that permit, but we were told if we were to redo our shop, which was in our, like future plan when we had more money, we'd have to do a variance because the minor modification, we were told, we were never supposed to be given. Whoever approved that for us wasn't supposed to approve that. And it doesn't move, like carry forward with any future permits that we open. So anyway, talking to the planning department, they told me, they basically told me, you should apply for a variance, you're probably going to get denied, but we're planning on asking to change it to 10% in the future. And I don't know how long that's going to take, so if this, if you need this done sooner, you should apply for a variance. So I realize that there's two criteria that you guys don't think I meet. The one being, you know, I can't remember the exact verbiage of B, that the physical circumstances don't allow me to, you know, enjoy my property and if I adhere to the rule. The current detached garage that we have is dilapidated. Every time it blows, shrapnel flies off of it. My husband, three times, has already like replaced parts of, there's a covered overhang storage area and then just the roof itself. And without sinking 50 grand into a new roof for this thing, we would like to just tear it down because it's not insulated. We have a lot of stuff out there that we don't want to freeze, so we would like to just tear it down and rebuild. And in order to do that, we need a permit. And in order for a permit to be approved, we would need this variance. So I know that this is, you guys think that this is self-imposed, but it's honestly, it's like our neighbors complain that shrapnel is flying anytime it's windy and they have pieces of our roof, pieces of our clear, covered storage roofing and pieces of our wall and gutter, it's like things are flying and we try our best every year to sure it up, but ultimately, we would like to tear it down and make something sturdier. And so, yes, we could do a smaller footprint and we could keep it the same exact, but even if we kept it the same exact, because the minor modification from our past permit doesn't carry forward to this next one, we'd be over. So we pretty much need a variance to do anything on this, even if we kept our same exact square footage of the current detached garage. And so if we are going to get a variance, our, our designer said, okay, well then make it as big as you want. Make it exactly what you want so that, you know, you get what you need. That's all, that's all I got.
Okay, you have six minutes and 16 seconds left for rebuttal. Are there any questions of the applicant by board members? No questions? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
Through the chair, no.
Okay, thank you. And so now we'll open the public hearing, so you can sit down. Sorry. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2023-0019? Anyone at all? Okay. So no public testimony. Does the staff have anything else to say? Any rebuttal, any?
Through the chair, no.
Does the applicant have any, anything further? She indicates no. So the public hearing is closed and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move in case 2023-0019 to approve a variance from AMC 21.06.020, Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards, Residential Districts, to allow for an increase in allowable lot coverage to exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage of 5% subject to the conditions shown on pages five and six of the staff report. Also adding item four that was stated in the staff report for the as-built removing, with stamped as-built for the greenhouse removal. Provide, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself there. So provide an as-built showing the greenhouse structure has, has been removed. Thank you.
Seconded by Mr. Hale. Mr. Flynn, will you speak to your motion, please?
Yes, I, I intend to have a positive vote for this motion. I feel as though that this is, this variance is, is small enough and, and that it's not impacting the neighbors, it's not impacting, it's going along the same footprint of their property, so I intend to have a yes vote on this motion.
Mr. Hale?
Through the chair, I guess I would just add that for B, I would say that it is an undue hardship because the right of enjoyment is a garage to store your stuff with and workshops and if they don't get the variance, which they may get through the 10% anyway, but that's not a given, so I think it would be an undue hardship without the, the variance. I think that's all I can add.
Anyone else? No one else has anything? Okay, please vote.
Ms. Sabina, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Ramardal, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have seven yes votes, zero no votes, so the variance is approved. Moving on to the next case. Next case is 2023-0051. William Dam Jr. is the petitioner, is the petitioner? Petitioner is available, apparently. So will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Chair. On June 16th, 2023, a total of 102 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with AMC 21.03.020H. No comments have been received.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before we get started, I wanted to provide clarification that this is a request for an accessory garage to encroach into a required side setback rather than rear, as stated in the agenda. This is a request for a variance from AMC 21-10-060, Table 21-10-6, Table of Dimensional Standards, Residential Districts, to allow a proposed accessory garage to encroach 15 feet into a required 25-foot side setback along the eastern property boundary. This is a corner lot with two frontages. Per AMC 21.06.030C4, double frontage lots do not have rear setbacks, only front and side setbacks. The primary front setback is along the western property boundary, fronting Mossberry Place, and the secondary front setbacks and side setbacks are 25 feet. The existing home was built in 1976 and was located on the most buildable level area of the site. The proposed garage will replace the existing shed to the east of the driveway. No public comments have been received and the Rabbit Creek and Bear Valley Community councils did not provide comment. There were no objections to the granting of this variance, but comments are included in Attachment 3. The following standards must be met for approval of this variance. Standard A is met, the subject parcel is owned R6 low-density residential district. There are exceptional physical circumstances of the property in form of slope and soil stability that limits the developable, developable area of the lot. The average slope of this lot is 26%, posing an exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstance to the property. The existing home utilizes onsite water and septic facilities. Although onsite systems are not considered a physical constraint of the land itself, they are a factor that can be reasonably considered when determining viability of development on the lot. The location of the well prohibits the proposed garage from being moved further west out of the setback to a conforming location. Standard B is met, as noted in standard A, there is a physical circumstance of the fort in the form of steep slopes, an average of 26% in soil stability that limit the developable area of this site. The house was placed in a conforming location in 1976 and due to the slope and existing site circulation and maneuvering, there are no conforming alternatives for the proposed garage. Standard C is met, the hardship is not self-imposed. The existing single-family residence was built in a conforming location. Due to the steep slope of the lot, it's unlikely that the site circulation and maneuverability could be reconfigured to accommodate a conforming location for the proposed garage. Standard D is met, given the character, history, and current zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear at this time that granting of the variance would adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. This encroachment does not extend into any abutting properties or municipal rights of ways. Standard E is met, the requested variances, excuse me, the requested variance will not change the character of the R6 district in which the site is located, which is intended for single and family, single and two-family residences. Standard F is met, it does not appear that this encroachment will result in any negative impacts to the health or safety of the municipality. Standard G is met, the standard is not applicable to single-family dwellings. Standard H is met, this variance request is the minimum variance necessary to make reasonable use of the land for its intended use. Due to the steep slope and existing site circulation, it is difficult to place the structure within a conforming location. Accessory garages are an example of accessory structures that are commonly seen throughout residential districts and their installation is a reasonable use of the land. The department finds that all eight approval criteria are met and recommends approval of this variance subject to conditions one through three on page five of the staff report. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the applicant, oh, excuse me, are there any questions of the staff by the board? Apparently there aren't. Are there any questions of the staff by the applicant? They indicate not. So the applicant or the applicant's representative, forward, you have done, and state and spell your name for the record, please. You need to turn your mic on. There.
Gotcha. My name is Stormy Jarvis, S-T-O-R-M-Y-J-A-R-V-I-S, and I'm the representative for Mr. Dam.
Thank you. Please present your case.
As staff presented, all eight standards are met. This property is very steep sloped. It makes it very difficult within the allowable setbacks to build on it. And so we've identified a location that is the next flattest after the, the house itself and is in the east setback and is also a significant slope up to the next properties into the next streets and will not impact anybody or anything.
You have nine minutes and 23 seconds left for rebuttal. Are there any questions of the applicant by board members? Mr. Smythe?
Through the chair, it looks like the greenhouse is a component of this, right? It can't slide any further to the west because of greenhouse in the way?
No, that greenhouse is eight feet higher than the parking area and is, would need to remove a significant amount of soil or build a, a retaining wall engineered, it's, gets pretty tricky as you get into those steep slope areas.
Got it, and maybe I'm missing something then. Oh, I see what you're, I see what you're saying. So to get it out of the setback, it would need, the new garage would need to basically sit in the driveway. Is what it looks like.
Yeah, and if you did that, you start to encroach on the well and then you don't have any turnaround ability and, or safe maneuverability in the parking area.
Understood, thanks.
Any other questions? Board members? Any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2023-0051? Anyone at all? Seeing none. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Does the applicant have anything additional? Indicate not. Okay, so the public hearing is closed and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Smythe?
Through the chair, I move in case 2023-0051 to approve a variance from AMC 21.06.020, Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards, Residential Districts, to allow an accessory garage to encroach into the required side setbacks subject to the conditions shown on page five and six of the staff report.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. Mr. Smythe, will you please speak to your motion?
I, I will, I, I'll keep it short and sweet. I agree with the staff's findings and the applicant, and I intend to support my motion.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn?
I'll keep it short, too. I also intend to, to vote positive in this and agree with the staff report.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please vote.
Ms. Sabina, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Ramardal?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have seven yes votes, zero no votes, so the variance is granted. Welcome. Okay, moving on to case, the next case. Case 20230063, Rachel Shed is the owner. And they are here. So will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On June 15, 2023, a total of 108 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of Anchorage Municipal Code. As of today, no public comments have been received. The site was also posted by the applicant, who has provided the affidavit of posting affirming this, and that is included in Attachment 4 of the staff packet. Thank you.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing and hearing none, will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a variance from Anchorage Municipal Code, Title 21, Chapter 6, Subsection 020, Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards Residential Districts, to allow a deck to encroach entirely within a 20-foot front setback. The applicant is requesting this variance to allow an existing deck to remain as-is and located entirely within the required 20-foot front setback. The existing deck was constructed at some point between 1993 and 2002, according to a non-conforming determination dated March 24, 2023, and included as part of the application. The subject property is a legally non-conforming R6 parcel that is subject to the dimensional requirements of the R1A district. Because of this, the front setback is 20 feet per the R1A standards rather than the 50-foot setback of the R6 standards. The Planning Department has evaluated the application and presents the following findings for the board's consideration this evening. For Standard A, we do believe the standard is met. The property was subdivided on September 15, 1971 via Platte 71-175, and later rezoned to R6 through an area-wide rezon on June 6, 1974. Because of this, the petition site is a legally non-conforming R6 lot that is subject to the dimensional standards of the R1A district. As a result, this lot is subject to an extraordinary physical circumstance in the form of unique lot geometry, which limits the developable area on the lot when compared to other conforming R6 lots, which meet the minimum lot size of one acre. There are no other exceptional physical circumstances, such as wetlands, streams, or slope, that affect the subject parcel. For Standard B, we believe the standard is not met. As demonstrated in Standard A, there are physical constraints in the form of unique lot geometry. However, the lot measures approximately 14,518 square feet, which is smaller than a conforming one-acre R6 lot. The owner has provided relief through the application of reduced setbacks of the R1A district, which allows the owner sufficient area for development. Given this, the strict application of code does not place an undue hardship on the property owner, nor will it deprive them of the ability to use their home and land in a conforming manner. For Standard C, we do believe the standard is met. The hardship is not self-imposed. The subject parcel is a legally non-conforming R6 parcel, and three years after the parcel was subdivided, it was rezoned to R6. Because of the subject parcel is less than one acre, it is subject to the setbacks of the R1A district, and the applicant did not construct the existing deck, but were under the impression that it was a legally non-conforming structure when they purchased their home in 2014. Because they did not construct either the home or deck, they did not have a choice to orient the home in a manner that it could accommodate the construction of additions or accessory structures in a location compliant with the R1A setbacks. For Standard D, we do believe the standard is met. Given the character, history, and current zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear at this time that the granting of this variance to encroach within the front setback will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. The existing deck encroaches entirely within the required 20-foot front setback and does not extend beyond the property line, or, excuse me, it does extend beyond the property line into the right-of-way. However, its presence within the right-of-way does not appear to be impeding traffic flow, given the existing condition and usage of Huffman Road. Neighboring property owners will retain the ability to make full lawful use of their land and property. Additionally, the development of accessory structures to include sheds, garages, stables, kennels, et cetera, are common amenities found within the rural residential districts and will not appear out of character. For Standard E, we do believe the standard is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the R6 zoning district in which the subject parcel is located. The R6 is designed, or designated, to encourage low-density residential development. This district is intended to protect and enhance those physical and environmental features that add to the desirability of large lot living. The availability of infrastructure municipal services is varied. Granting this variance to encroach within the front setback will not permit either principal or accessory use other than what is already permitted under Anchorage Municipal Code, and the property will be developed and maintained in a manner consistent with the intent and purpose of the R6 district. For Standard F, we do believe the standard is met. The approval of the variance will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. The existing encroachment does not impact vehicular traffic flow, utilities, stormwater drainage, groundwater, airspace, and/or pedestrian facilities. For Standard G, the standard is met. Simply because this standard is not applicable, the provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act does not apply to single-family homes. For Standard H, we do believe the standard is not met. The existing single-family home also encroaches within the required 20-foot front side setback, but this encroachment is considered legally non-conforming per a non-conforming determination. As such, this parcel is being used in accordance with the intent of its underlying R6 single-family zoning to provide a land base for the construction of a single-family home. The addition of accessory structures to enhance the function of a single-family home are commonly enjoyed amenities within residential districts. However, given that the legally non-conforming single-family home is located on property, this parcel is being used in a reasonable manner. Although decks are commonly enjoyed amenities of single-family homes, the total encroachment appears beyond the minimum necessary to provide ingress and egress to the home and/or provide living space. And given these findings, Anchorage Municipal Code does require that all eight standards be substantially met in order for the variance to be granted. The Department finds that Standards A, C, D, E, F, and G are met, and Standards B and H are not met, and therefore we do recommend denial of the variance. However, if after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight approval criteria are met, then we do recommend that the approval be subject to Conditions 1, 2, and 3 on Page 6 of the staff report, and the advisory comment listed on Page 6 is intended to remain advisory and not a condition of approval. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? Seeing none, are there any questions of staff by the applicant? They indicate not. So, will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward and state and spell your name for the record? It's on.
Hi, my name is Rachel Shed, R-A-C-H-E-L-S-H-E-D-D.
And I'm Kyle Shedden, K-Y-L-E-S-H-E-D-D.
Thank you. Please present your case.
Okay, hello. Thank you all for being here on arguably the nicest day of the summer to listen to me talk about my deck. So I'm Rachel Shed. This is my husband Kyle Shed. We live at 7241 Huffman Road. Legal description is Straley Lot 3. You know all of this. It's just below the intersection of Hillside Drive and Huffman Road. We've been living there for about nine years since we bought the house in 2014. It's a very cute little A-frame. We included pictures for you all to review. We've always known since we bought the house that it was a quirky old house, and we knew when we bought the house that the deck was in the setback and the road easement. And as you noted in the staff report, we were given information, and we were under the impression that it was all legally non-conforming at the time we bought the house. So we were focused on other issues with this quirky house. One of the quirks we've been living with is that it is particularly bad at snow management for an A-frame. The entrance to the basement and the egress window to the basement bedroom are both located under the eaves of the A-frame. So every time it snows, snow piles up in front of both of those exits, and we can't get in or out of the basement when it snows until we shovel it. And as everyone here knows, we did a lot of shoveling this winter, and we decided it was time to deal with that problem. So as we started interviewing contractors and designers, we realized pretty quickly we were going to need a non-conforming determination because we do have this strange lot size for the R6 zone, and we successfully got the non-conforming determination, but when they returned it, we discovered that the deck we thought was legally non-conforming at some point 20 to 30 years ago had been expanded to the point where it was no longer legally conforming. And the report said that we needed to either remove the deck or get a variance. So here we are. So first, I just want to say, like, well, I already said that the deck in its existing dimensions has been there for 20 to 30 years. In that time, the house has been bought and sold four times, and no one has ever mentioned it. It's never come up as an issue. The existing deck is in good shape, and it also provides access to the front door of the house, which is elevated about five feet off the ground. So we do need some sort of staircase and landing just to get into the house, and currently the deck serves that function. Another thing I'd like to point out is that the road in real life looks very different from the road on paper. So we live on Huffman Road, so it has an unusually wide easement because it is Huffman Road. So it's an 80-foot easement as opposed to the normal 50-to-60-foot easements found in the R6 zone. So if we had a normal easement size, this would be a non-issue, but because we're on Huffman with this very large easement, it is an issue, except that the section of Huffman we live on is a single-lane dirt road, and we've talked to Traffic Engineering and Right-of-Way several times, and it sounds like there are no plans to develop that section of the road anytime soon. So actually, when you're driving up the road, our, the deck in question is 30 feet away from the road, even though on paper it looks like it's in the road easement. And, and we even use the space in front of it as a parking area, as all of the other previous owners have done. It doesn't interfere with plowing. It doesn't interfere with traffic flow. It doesn't interfere with safety. It doesn't encroach on the neighbor's property. No one even has any idea that there's an issue with it unless we bring it up. And as you can see from the letters of non-injection we included in our packet, none of our neighbors have any complaints about it. So in short, we're asking for this variance for the deck so that we can focus on the higher priority egress issues that we're looking at with our basement. It just kind of feels like a waste right now to demolish a perfectly good deck when it still has plenty of life in it, and doing so would divert finances and resources and time and energy away from these higher priority projects that we have. So, and we understand that, you know, if and when the time comes to replace the deck, that we will need a variance, and we will need to redevelop it to at least be within the property line. But I do want to point out that regardless of whether we are allowed to keep the existing deck or redevelop it, we will need a variance for it, because it's not just the deck that encroaches in the setback, it's actually the entire front of the house. The front of the house is only 12 feet from the property line, and like I said, that is the entrance to the house. So we need some sort of staircase and landing to get into the house, and it necessarily will be 100% in that 20-foot setback. There's no way around it. So, I guess we've gone through the eight standards. It sounds like the Planning Department agrees that we meet six of them, so we would like to spend the remainder of our time focusing on the two standards that the Planning Department does not think we meet. The first is Standard B, which says that because of the extraordinary physical circumstances of the lot, the strict application of code creates exceptional or undue hardship. So we all agree that there are physical, exceptional physical circumstances for the lot. It was developed before zoning laws were even in existence. It's unusually small. The house is located very close to 12 feet from the property line. The report that we received says that we are provided relief from the R6 standards by the application of Zone R1A standards, which allow us a smaller setback of 20 feet, but like I said, the whole house is already in the 20-foot setback. So that, the R1A standards don't account for the location of the house with, with respect to the setbacks. And so, yeah, like I've said several times now, because the whole house is in the setback, because the front door is in the setback, because we need access to the front door, strict application of the R1A zoning setbacks mean that we wouldn't be able to get into our house, and I consider that undue hardship. And the other standard that the report says that we don't meet is Standard H, that the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. And to this, we just want to point out that we're not asking to create a new structure that would exceed the minimum reasonable use. We're just asking to keep an existing structure that's been there for 20 to 30 years without causing any issues. And we do understand that at some point we will need to replace the deck because decks age, and that's homeownership. And we fully understand and agree with the recommendation from Traffic Engineering and the advisory comment from the Planning Department that if the deck is redeveloped, or if the road is improved, the footprint of the deck will be required to be reduced to ensure the structure is completely on property and would require additional variance to be reconstructed. We're happy to comply with that recommendation when the time comes to replace the deck or if the road is improved. We also understand that that condition would run with the land, and we don't intend to sell the house anytime soon, but if we were to sell it before the deck was redeveloped, we would make sure that the future owners know that there's an issue with it. We're just asking to keep this existing structure while we focus on higher priority egress, life, and safety issues. So thank you all for your time and attention, and we are happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Mr. Smythe?
Through the Chair, out of curiosity, did the, were plans submitted for the renovations you're talking about that led to this effort?
We're actually in the middle of, we're working with a designer right now on plans, but we did include in the packet kind of a rough estimate of the plans that we're looking at, and nothing that we are interested in doing is in the setback.
Yeah, just comment, this is the first time we've seen something like this, and also I commend your neighbor input. I think that's impressive. Thanks.
We have great neighbors.
Anybody else? Any questions of the applicant by staff?
Madam Chair, I do not.
Thank you. So is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 20230063? Anyone at all? Seeing none? Does the staff have any rebuttal?
Madam Chair, I do not.
Does the applicant have anything additional they want to say? They indicate not. The public hearing is closed, and the matter now rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Hale? State your motion.
Thank you to the Chair. I move in case 2023-0063 to approve a variance from AMC 21.06.020, Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards Residential Districts, to allow a deck to encroach entirely within a 20-foot front setback, subject to the conditions shown on Page 6 of the staff report.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hale, would you please speak to your motion?
Thank you. I do agree with the staff comments for the most part, except for when it comes to B and H. We've seen these cases before with the non-conforming lots that become conforming lots later on, and they're always a problem, and that's why this board exists, I think, initially. So I've, I've had to deal with them. I know several professionals have, and the problem is, when you have onsite well and septic, you don't have an acre, everything gets shrunk up. It makes it really hard to develop. And so I think that's exactly where this board can help. And I find that the, the configuration of the lot and the, and the fact that it's 14,500 square feet rather than 40,000 is a huge factor. I mean, that's a huge limiting factor physically. So I find that physical circumstances does create an undue hardship, and it also... Uh, and it also, I believe that with H, the minimum variance, this is a many, a minimum variance that will make it possible to reasonably use the land because of the size. So I'm planning on supporting the motion.
Mr. Flynn?
Uh, I agree with, uh, Mr. Hale's points. Um, I disagree with the, uh, staff recommendation to, um, not allow this variance and approved, uh, and intend to have a positive motion on this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Anyone else have anything to say? Seeing none? Please vote. Ms. Sabina, how do you vote? Mr. Ramadell? There are seven yes votes, zero no votes, and the variance is granted. Moving on to the last case. Case twenty-two-three-zero-zero-six-four. Todd Glidewell is the owner, indicates he is here. So will the, will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, a total one-hundred-and-three public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of AMC twenty-one oh-three oh-two oh-H.
Are there any objections to sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So each one of these cases here tonight is a little bit different, um, although they may deal with the similar things. So this is a request for a variance from tw- table twenty-one oh-six-dash-one for residential districts to allow a deck to encroach entirely within a ten-foot secondary front setback. Um, the subject lot is located in R six residential zoning district on the corner of Lotter Circle and Hundred-and-Twelfth Avenue, which is not constructed and currently uses driveway access to the property. Uh, so the applicant included a non-conforming status determination from April twenty-twenty-one, which notes that the subject lot was platted in seventy, and the original structure was built several years later in seventy-nine. And research from that non-conforming determination shows that the encroaching deck was constructed after zoning but before nineteen-eighty-six. And AMC twenty-one thirteen oh-four E, that section allows for existing structures with dimensional encroachments into required setbacks prior, constructed prior to eighty-six to continue in existence. So a non-conforming structure may be rebuilt in the same location if the property owner obtains a building permit. So that's what we have going on with the deck that was constructed pre-eighty-six. Now, the owner had a permit for non-structural internal renovations and rebuilt the deck. As it was pointed out in the inspection process, the deck was rotted, unsafe, and would need to be replaced. The owner, uh, did not apply for a change order to the original permit to include rebuilding the deck, as he was under a, a residential building permit. Um, and therefore, that resulted in the loss of the non-conforming status. And I'll read the section. That's AMC twenty-one thirteen oh-ten-H. So the owner is here requesting this variance, um, as, as previously here stated, of what, what conditions arose. Uh, the owner did narrative, the owner's narrative does address the encroaching the right-of-way, and, uh, he'll need to obtain a encroaching permit from the right-of-way section. Um, so I'll go through here with the, uh, findings. Staff has found Standard A is met. The petition cited is a legally non-conforming R six lot, subject to the R five district. The property is a corner lot on a cul-de-sac bulb, and because of this, the lot's subject to circumstances in the form of unique ge, lot geometry, which develops, which limits the developer area on the lot when compared to other R six conforming lots. Um, Standard B, staff finds that has been met. Um, there is physical constraints in the unique lot geometry. Uh, strict application of the code places undue hardship on the property owner, um, may den, may deprive them of, in the, in ability to enjoy a commonly enjoyed amenity such an ingress egress from their home. Decks are not as permanent as houses, but they do add substantial value to property by creating outdoor space with a sense of privacy. Uh, staff finds Standard C is met. The hardship is not self-imposed. The subject parcel is a legally non-conforming R six parcel under subdivision, and four years after that, uh, was subdivided, the re, area-wide rezon, zoned the property. And because of that, the subject parcel is less than one acre, and it's subject to those setbacks in the R five district. So the property owner did not construct the existing deck, but were under the impression that it was legally non-conforming structure when they purchased their home in twenty-fifteen. Because they did not construct either the home or the deck, they were only replacing the existing rotted wooded deck per the municipal inspection that took place, and were keeping the footprint the same dimensions. Their circumstances do not appear to result the app, of the actions of the applicant as the deck was existing prior to the owner purchasing the property. Staff finds Standard D is met. East Hundred-and-Twelfth Avenue is currently not developed to a municipal standard, and the lot's current driveway is located within that right-of-way, and Traffic Engineering Department states that the existing deck will not impact any future development of the right-of-way, um, as is not anticipated. Staff finds E is met. Uh, it won't change the character of the R six, uh, zoning district. Um, granting of the variance to encroach within the secondary front setback will not permit either a principal or accessory use, other than what is already permitted. Staff finds Standard F is met. The approval of the variance will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. Um, the existing, should be noted that the existing encroachment does not impact vehicular traffic flow, as that section or his road is not even, uh, built to any standard. Staff finds G is met, and then with H, uh, staff finds that is met, the subject property has those non-conforming rights. Um, as such, the parcel is being used in accordance with the intent of the underlying R six district. Uh, the deck was rebuilt to the existing size of the original deck that was constructed prior to nineteen-eighty-six, and the requested variance is the minimum variance that would allow continued use of the recently expanded deck. And I think we should maybe, um, oh, my, my pages is, oh, they are numbered. Okay, so if we take a look at, well, I would perhaps, page twenty-seven shows, um, the driveway, and that's Hundred-and-Twelfth Avenue, unconstructed. As I mentioned, they're, they're just using that as their driveway, and then it goes into the garage, but you can see the deck there. Um, that's also, they have a sliding glass door to get out for, for egress. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? Seeing none? Are there any questions of staff by the applicant? I know, it's kind of out of order, but that's the way it is. The, never mind.
Uh, do I have any questions?
Okay. Then, would you please come forward and state and spell your name for the record?
Todd Glidewell.
You need to turn on the mic. There you go.
Uh, Todd Glidewell, T-O-D-D, last name Glidewell, G-L-I-D-E-W-E-L-L.
Thank you. Please present your case.
Uh, uh, I bought a house and started a remodel, and, um, the gentleman who was doing the remodel completely destroyed my home and walked away with my money and the copper from my house, and so we got the municipal inspector involved, and he told me that the house was over thirty percent exposed, and so I had to rebuild it from the ground up. And during that process, I had watched a ton of YouTube videos and started figuring out how to rebuild a house. And, uh, it was noted to me that the deck was, had rot on it, and that I needed to tear it off. Um, when I purchased the house, half of the deck was Trex, and the rest of it was, uh, wood on top, but it looked like it'd just been painted over. Um, and then, when he noted, when he, uh, identified that it had rot on top, uh, when we pulled the top boards off, the structural as well was rotten. So we pulled all of it off, and then, as I continued to figure out how to build a house, it just completely drained me financially. So I had to, uh, essentially get to the point where I could live in the house, but in a, uh, in a CCO, um, because I didn't have a deck on it. And so then, um, finally, I was able to afford the eighty thousand bucks to finish the deck. Um, and then, at that time, crazily because of COVID, lumber was the same price as Trex, so I just finished the whole deck in Trex. And then, um, uh, I forget, oh, we were closing on our permit, and when someone came up, they told me that I didn't have a permit for my deck. And so, I'm here.
You have eight minutes and twenty-five seconds for rebuttal. Should there be any need for that? So are there any questions of the applicant by board members? Doesn't look like it. Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No.
Okay. I would ask if there was anybody from the public wishing to testify, but there's nobody in the public. So we will, uh, let's see. Does the staff have anything additional?
No, Madam Chair.
Does the applicant have anything additional? Nope. Then the, uh, public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Smythe?
I move in case twenty-two-three-zero-zero-six-four to approve a variance from AMC twenty-one point zero-six-point-zero-two-zero, table two-point-zero-six-dash-one, table of dimensional standards residential districts to allow a deck to encroach entirely within a ten-foot secondary front setback, subject to the conditions shown on page six of the staff report.
Seconded by Mr. Hale. Mr. Smythe, would you please speak to your motion?
I intend to support the motion for all the reasons described in the staff packet, uh, and by the owner, I, I, yeah, this is a, this is an interesting one. Uh, I hope this helps, uh, complete the process.
Mr. Hale?
Thank you. I agree with staff, uh, findings, and I intend to support the motion.
Okay. Anything additional? Anybody else have anything to add? Seeing none? Please vote. Ms. Sabina, how do you vote? Mr. Ramadell?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, that's seven positive votes, zero negative votes, and the variance is granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, um, we have reports, reports from the chair. I would like to welcome Travis as our newest board member, and apologize for forgetting my edited procedure verbiage, which includes Robert's Rules of Order. That's it. Nothing from the secretary? Nope. We have no committees. We'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Smythe. We are adjourned. Thank you. 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 Thank you.